Welcome everyone to the November 5th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see everybody out there tonight. First, I'd like to announce that Mr. Italia and Mr. Edwards couldn't be here this evening. The Board of Supervisors did not have an executive session tonight, but the Board of Supervisors did hold a budget workshop at 6:35 where Mr. Ryan had spoken about the zoning budget, the fire marshal budget, and the public works budget. He also brought up to us about a Sill bill at the Phoenix Swim Club. Ms. Mason from the library came and spoke about a Keystone matching grant application. We had a young lady from GoGov, her name was Samantha, I apologize, I did not get her last name, but she sells citizens alerts for the company she works for, so she did a little presentation via Zoom, which was nice. Mr. Galdo spoke about a worker protection form for a recycling grant. Mr. Dylan spoke about the appointment for the zoning, the appointment for the alternate zoning hearing board. Mr. Coppin spoke about some drainage issues off of Windsweb Drive. He also spoke about possibly purchasing a new oil tank at the Play Wiki Farmhouse. Mr. Castle spoke about a basin off of Pike Road and Pike Circle. And we had two representatives here tonight that just so happened to show up from Whitetail Disposal to introduce themselves. So, in front of us tonight, we have proclamation resolution 2025-37 honoring the heroes of the McDonald's CPR emergency. I'll tell you what, this gentleman, I'm not sure if he is here tonight. Okay, yep. I tell you what, it's good to see you, first off, right? But you are blessed, sir, and you are blessed as we all are to have such fine people that represent our township. And with that said, if any, I take it all of the people involved are already standing because, you know, all of our first responders are standing, but we would like to have Mrs. Bowman, as she always does such a great job, read the proclamation.
All right, this is proclamation resolution 2025-37. Whereas Lower Southampton Township is a township of the second class in the county of Bucks, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to the authority vested in by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Southampton hereby resolves the following. Whereas on the morning of Sunday, September 14th, 2025, at approximately 8:10 a.m., Mr. Thomas Raskowski suffered sudden cardiac arrest while walking his dog in the parking lot of the McDonald's located at 334 East Street Road in Feasterville. And whereas McDonald's customer Ellen Foley witnessed Mr. Raskowski collapse and immediately took heroic action by calling for help and beginning CPR, provided the first critical moments of care that helped save his life. And whereas Lower Southampton Police Sergeant Christopher Corline, Corporal William Schmidt, Officer Dave Engel, and Officer Heather Carnaval, already in the area on another call, arrived within moments, quickly administering aid using an automatic external defibrillator, AED, and performed lifesaving chest compressions. And whereas Feasterville Fire Company Chief Chris Cummins, Deputy Chief Mike Gilli, and Lieutenant Andre Aloyan responded promptly and assisted in providing oxygen and additional lifesaving support. And whereas Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad Paramedic James Babinetz, Paramedic Ashlyn Arthur, EMT Michael DeGrassi, and EMT Kyle Keough assumed patient care upon arrival, continuing advanced life support and transporting Mr. Raskowski to St. Mary Medical Center, where he underwent emergency surgery and ultimately survived. And whereas the combined efforts of bystanders, law enforcement, fire personnel, and emergency medical services demonstrated the highest level of professionalism, training, and dedication to the preservation of life. And now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of the Lower Southampton Township hereby recognize and commend Ellen Foley, Sergeant Christopher Corline, Corporal William Schmidt, Officer Dave Engel, Officer Heather Carnaval, Chief Chris Cummins, Deputy Chief Mike Gilli, Lieutenant Andre Aloyan, Paramedic James Babinetz, Paramedic Ashlyn Arthur, and EMT Michael DeGrassi, and EMT Kyle Keough for their exemplary service, swift action, and selfless dedication, which together resulted in saving the life of Mr. Thomas Raskowski. Adopted by at least the majority of the members of the Board of Supervisors at a duly advertised meeting of the township on the 5th day of November 2025, at which a quorum was present.
Very beautiful, Mrs. Bowman. Now with that said, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make...
All right, we'll give that to Mr. Paritana. Do we have a second, Mrs. Bowman?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, folks. Folks, we're going to give the Supervisors a few minutes to sign the proclamations, and we're going to take a break for a few minutes, and we're going to have some photos. So, once again, thank you guys for everything, and we're going to sign all these right now.
So we can, you know, restart the meeting again?
Okay. We got her. Under the fishing flag. She giving you?
All right, folks, the gentleman who was saved by our first responders just came up to me, and he would like to hit the microphone and actually have a few words for, you know, this evening, so, sir, please, I know if I pronounce your name, I'm going to butcher it, so I apologize.
You did well the first time, so, thank you. First of all, I have to acknowledge how terribly lucky I am that the situation involved as it did. If Mrs. Foley wasn't there, and the police weren't right around, I wouldn't be here. And I acknowledge that, and I thank them very much for all their efforts. They saved my life, no question about it. I'd also like to say that since the word got out, I've had a lot of my neighbors, even people several streets away, come over and talk to me and offer to help, and I think it's, we should acknowledge that we really do live in a very nice community that's filled with really nice people. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that, and, I mean, somebody even mowed my lawn for me, can you believe that? So, but, we, the community is really great, and I'm just really glad to be here, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. We, uh... We do agree with you, we have a great community, great first responders, and we are so glad that you're doing well. You look great.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much, folks, thank you. All right. All right, and with all that being done, now, we would like to announce the winners of the Halloween house decorating contest. Mr. Mo Holland, sir, if you'd like to work your magic?
Thank you, Board Chair. This year, we once again had our annual house decorating contest for Halloween, presented by Jersey Mike's Feasterville. We had 14 participants this year, which was up, and over 130 votes, which again was a great turnout for us. Lots of social media comments and shares, so, again, a great community aspect, everybody getting involved, which was great to see. Jersey Mike's, Usman usually is here, but he could not make it tonight, so he sent me a quick thing, he wants me to read for him. He says, "Good evening, Township Supervisors and residents of Lower South Hampton Township. Every year, we look forward to joining your meeting and presenting our gift cards to the wonderful contestants of the Halloween decorating contest. Although our schedules did not allow us to join you, we just wanted to take a moment to say hello to our neighbors, thank you for allowing us to be a part of this wonderful annual contest. Very special congratulations to our winners for your dedication, deserving honor. We look forward to serving you all very soon in our Feasterville store. Take care and have a good night and a great upcoming holiday season." We did have three categories this year, so we did scariest, most creative, and people's choice. Each winner will get a $100 gift card to Jersey Mike's, $50 credit to the recreation programs, and then a certificate from our department. So, the winner of, I mean, they're all here tonight, which is great. The winner of the scariest house was Joseph Hansberry from 203 Hickory Avenue, and I'll have them all come up afterwards and do pictures.
Sure, sure.
Um, we will.
Yeah, you will.
I got you. That's on our Facebook page, you gotta check it out. So, the winner of most creative was Michael McKellic from 301 Elmwood, and people's choice was Rachel Corn from 1620 N. Avenue. Thank you.
Very good, congratulations.
Move so I'm not in all these.
There you go.
You guys, the one up here, we can just take.
This irks me when the mic is in the way.
Thank you all very much.
I went around and saw every house, they were amazing.
Congratulations, everyone, you know, thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you, thank you all.
And thank you, that was a lot of fun, driving around and seeing all the homes. Really liked that.
So we did get more votes than we ever have, and our Christmas house contest will be up on the website for registration by the end of this week.
Terrific, thank you, job well done, Mr. Holland.
Thank you.
We appreciate your effort, too. All right, now, I would like to open the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to come up, please state your name, address, put it in the log, and a three-minute time limit, as always.
Yeah, hi, my name's Glenn Stevens. I reside at 345 East Merrill Avenue in Feasterville, and is at that location where I was victimized by the corrupt subcontractor zoning official, Mike Italian. I don't know why he did what he did, and he pled the fifth and won't answer my question, so I possibly will never learn from the horse's mouth exactly why he did what he did. Mr. Gates, I saw you come up and speak after I did last time.
Mr. Stevens, please address the board, sir.
Oh, yeah, I'm not allowed to talk to him. Anybody else could, but I'm not allowed.
Mr. Stevens, please address the board. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I've been, um, so anyway, the first thing you said was, "You're sick of hearing me come up here and talk, believe you me. I am so sick of coming here. I never wanted to come up once. If you ask the chairman, he will tell you that I would degrade pains to keep this all secret, because I didn't want to get Mike fired or arrested. I wanted to make sure that he wasn't exposed to this corrupt action that he did. So I, correct, Mr. Carey, I came to you on the down low, I would degrade pains to make sure nobody else knew about this."
All I'll say is, you did reach out to me first.
Well, I got your email, I sent you an email, I asked you to call me.
Mr. Stevens, I'm not sure about your pains, but I'm not, as far as your pains, your great pains, I'm not, I'm not your physician.
Well, I went to great lengths, not pains, great lengths to make sure I didn't have to expose the corruption that was done to me through Mike Italian. The second thing he said, sir, was, "You told him all you had to do is get a survey." I find that hard to believe, sir. I imagine you're a good neighbor, I don't know what your financial position is, I imagine you're a retired gentleman such as myself, you get social security, a little pension. If your neighbor was getting a fence, would you be, think that the township would demand that you get a $1,200 survey? That makes no sense to me at all. That's one of the questions I want to ask Mike Italian. Why didn't, when he looked down at my bricks, he say, "I can't let you destroy those bricks until you get a survey." All the other neighbors all got a survey? Because Mike Italian let this guy not get a survey. I don't understand it at all. So, when you said that, "Oh, you told him all he has to do is get a survey," I was shocked, I really was. Personally, I feel a survey is totally pointless anyway. I think if my bricks were on the moon, and the Chinese took over the moon, they should have to tell me to remove my bricks before they steal them and destroy them. That's my opinion. Doesn't matter where they were on this planet or any other planet, they were mine, they were always mine, Mike Italian never had the authority to steal them from me and give them to someone else. Ms. Castle, you said you were gonna have to talk to the solicitor about some stuff. I hope you're much better, I hope you're much better, you do much better than I did, because Mr. Dillon just plays the fifth every time I try to ask him a question. He refuses to answer anything. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
And, um...
Have a good night, thank you, sir.
I had more I wanted to say, but I got lost, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? All right, seeing none. Now, we will move forward with the consent agenda, line one, A, approval of minutes, October 22nd, 2025; B, approval of budget and minutes, October 22nd, 2025; C, approval of accounts payable, November 5th, 2025; and D, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, November 5th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item two, consider authorizing the township manager to sign the worker protection form for the recycling grant. Mr. Galdo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is coming from Howland Associates, our vendor that handles our DEP and 904 grants. This is a request that DEP is asking for. It just shows that we're compliant with state labor laws and workplace safety laws, so I would sign that with your approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Galdo. So the motion would read, authorize the township manager to sign the worker protection form for the recycling grant. Do we have a motion?
No. I'll make that motion.
Oh, that's a, that's a tough one, I'm gonna give that to Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mrs. Bowman, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item three, appointment of the zoning hearing board alternate. So, this position was recommended by the solicitor of the zoning hearing board, just in case a member was unable to attend due to illness or prior obligation. He also noted, as does Mr. Dillon, that many other townships have this position, and I also spoke to the chairman of the zoning hearing board, and he agrees with their solicitor's opinion.
So, just as a further comment, this is provided under the municipality's planning code. The municipality's planning code calls for a resolution to be adopted, creating the position and appointing a person. I've prepared a resolution, I've left blank the name to be filled in after a vote by the board of supervisors.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dillon. So we had two applicants for this tonight. We are very thankful that citizens in our community always want to go above and beyond and, you know, jump in on all these different subsidiary boards, and we thank them both. Unfortunately, we can only pick one. And I would like to make the motion to adopt Resolution 2025-39, appointing Joseph Rocco Falato as the alternate zoning hearing board member for a term beginning November 2025, ending December 31st, 2027, contingent upon him resigning from the planning commission and also as the vacancy board chairman. I had made the motion, can I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Falato. All right, moving on to line item four, consider adoption of Resolution 2025-38, authorizing the submission of the library keystone grant application. Mr. Galdo, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is, this is a request from Millennium, which is our grant writer, the grant writers working with the library, you know, our library system. This would be half, it's discussed as that this would have to be put under the township banner, thus this request, it is a matching grant, the matching funds would be coming out of the Friends of Committee, as well as the, I guess, the library fund component, not the township. It would enhance the children area, as well as increase the space for the children area and some furniture, from what I'm told. So that, the library is requesting an approval for this resolution, so they could report back to Millennium with regard to this keystone grant.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Galdo. So the motion would read, to adopt Resolution 2025-38, authorizing the submission of the library keystone grant application. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Castle, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to managers' report, Mr. Galdo, sir?
Briefly, Board Chair, at your desk is the bid results with regard to the refuse bid that was done in conjunction with Upper Southampton. At the next board meeting, it would be on your, as an agenda item for approval. I just gave you the results, and then we can have further discussion in the upcoming weeks. So, but for the November 19th meeting, we would need approval for the refuse contract.
All right, very good, let's just make sure, that'll be on the agenda, terrific, thank you. All right, moving on to supervisors' comments, to my right, Mrs. Bowman.
I just want to thank everybody that participated in the Halloween decorating, house decorating contest, and I look forward to the Christmas house decorating contest, and wanna thank Mr. Walt down there for all these interactive activities that he's providing the community. It really adds something special. We look forward to these events, and thanks for putting them together.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Bowman, Mr. Perrotto, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone that came out today, participate, especially the presentation we had from first responders that saved Mr. Warkowski's life, I think I got it right. Talked to him for a moment, such a nice gentleman, you know, and he's so appreciative, you know, for what he considers a gift, he told me, so. When people, you know, talk about community and township, you know, I think Lower South always rises to the top, I do believe, at least my 30-plus years living here, always met great people, always willing to help everybody, and this is just an example of that, to our Halloween winners. That's another part of the community, of course, you know, Walt and what he does to encourage people, but people that go to the lengths that they do to, you know, just make a difference in their community. Like Miss Bowman said, it's just a joy to just drive around and see all these, these things, and the lengths that they'll go to, to try and outdo the other person, it's really, it's really great, so, as she said, you know, when Christmas comes, we're looking for more. What else was left? Ba, 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 ba. Why did I write zoning down? I don't know why, I wrote zoning down. We'll get back to that Pine Tree Farms, I see Mr. Foster in the audience, maybe Mr. Castle can add more commentary to you, we did speak about it in work session, excuse me, in work session, so, you know, we didn't forget, so, it's still gonna take a while, but, you know, Mr. Castle's been doing some real work behind the scenes to try and get some things in motion, so, I'll let him comment on that. So, otherwise, thank you all for coming out, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Mr. Ottinger, sir?
Another night.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ottinger. Mr. Castle?
Mr. Chairman, I'm shocked that he's silent tonight. Thank you very much to the members of the audience who are here today and at home watching. We are here to serve you, and anybody, it's three minutes to come up and tell us your complaints or whatever you want to tell us, so, we always like to hear from, from people. Sign up for emails, lowersouthampton township.org. Once a week, we're gonna be having a road shutdown on Brownsville Road for overnight work, and if you're getting our emails, you should be aware of that. Please go online and check our parks and recreation, we have some fall programs and winter programs coming up. Mr. Mo Holland does a great job with that. Mr. Foster, I had been all through the woods, I hope I don't get any ticks. Our engineer and one of our foremen were walking the creek bed from Pike Road, Pike Circle, all the way down to Pine Tree Farms. I took about 40 photographs today, I'm shocked to see the water outlets coming from the turnpike. Some of this water is coming from, from the upper end by Pike Road and Pike Circle, but the township just dumps their water out there, so, when, when we have another meeting...
Turnpike Commission.
Turnpike Commission. So when we have our next meeting, hopefully, the turnpike will be there so we could ask some questions, and we'll probably put some photographs up there. I am certain that the guy's never been out there, he's not aware of what it looks like and what happens. Mr. Everettson, our foreman, we're out there during a rainstorm, and I heard it got pretty muddy out there, so, I'd like to see the video of that. Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is November 19th, we're a little combobulated here, but the 19th is our next meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Castle, for that. It's already been stated earlier this evening, but, you know, a big thanks to all the heroes, the residents, everybody who participated in saving the gentleman's life who we had here this evening, I mean, we are fortunate, you know, a lot of communities, you know, a lot of communities, this might not have happened, as quick as it did, to save this guy's life, so, you know, we are blessed with the first responders we have here in Lower South. As we all know, yesterday was Election Day, and I want to congratulate my colleague to my right, Mrs. Bowman, on her, on her win. Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. We are happy that we will be sitting here with you for, you know, another six years, so congratulations. I'd like to also congratulate Mr. Boardner, he will be sitting up here shortly, we will miss Mr. Ottinger tremendously, but, Mr. Boardner...
Especially his commentary.
But also a big, but also a big thanks to Mr. Boardner, too, for doing a terrific job. And at this time, can we get a motion for a gentleman? I like the motion. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, guys, motion carries, thank you very much, everyone.